Three oh one. Watch, uh, before we start the meeting, I'd like to, uh, recognize the homeland of the thirty First Nation communities of this area. We now call the FBRD, where we live, work, and learn. The important things that we make here at the local government level can affect First Nation communities and indigenous peoples and organizations in a in many different ways, both today and into the future. So as part of our collective responsibility, I commit, we continually examine the work we do to ensure that our project plans, initiatives, and discussions are guided by the principles of inclusion, collaboration, and reconciliation. And with that in mind, I'd like to call the January twenty-fifth meeting of the Committee of the Whole to order the first item. Ms. Kinnam.
Looking for approval of the agenda, addenda, and late items?
So moved, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Even, even online, he still beat you all to the punch here. So it's moved by Director Fazio, seconded by Director Clute. All in favor, opposed, defending the item. Carrie's next item.
Four point one is the FBRD twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-eight financial plan. And we will just turn things over to our CFO, Kelly Lonsborough, and our controller, Beth Klein.
So Lonsborough, who's Klein. Floor is yours.
Okay. Good afternoon, board members and members of the public. I am Kelly Lonsborough, the FBRD's Director of Corporate Services and Chief Financial Officer. My colleague Beth Klein, FBRD's Controller, and I will be walking you through the draft financial plan for twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-eight this afternoon. This year's financial plan marks the first year in a formal asset management program, a year of expanded public engagement, and a more fulsome and robust review and approval process for regional grants and aid. We know that these are trying times for many members of the community who are experiencing large cost increases in many aspects of their lives. We are focused on making responsible choices to ensure a slow and predictable tax bill to avoid dramatic shockwaves in the future as much as possible. By way of background, the FBRD manages approximately one hundred and fourteen unique service areas, all with distinct purposes, unique tax bases, and specific revenues and expenses that cannot be shared with other service areas. A service area could be a water system or a sewer system that only certain properties pay into, or a full electoral area for certain shared services, or a regional service area that is applicable to all property owners in the FBRD, such as for mosquito control, for example. As each service area is established by bylaw, it is essential that we manage the funds effectively on a service area by service area basis. At this phase of the financial planning process, today will mark the conclusion of the preparation stages of all budgets. Included in the materials today are summaries of the electoral area budgets that have been endorsed by electoral area directors. Today's focus at this Committee of the Whole is to review the regional and subregional service area budgets. We have certain budgets with key decisions which we will present and request a motion from board members. Ultimately, we are looking for support to, to proceed to the next step in the financial plan process. As part of our expanded public consultation process this year, we will come, we will keep the engagement platform, Have Your Say, open for an additional two-week period to allow fulsome review of the financial plan in its entirety before bringing the plan to the board in March for final approval. During this afternoon's meeting, we'll cover the topics listed on this slide. We will be referencing the presentation slides that were published with the agenda. We strive for transparency and to that end have included presentation materials available for all regional and subregional service area budgets. We are all also cognizant of time, time constraints, and overall impact of certain budgets. This year, we will present only those service area budgets where the proposed tax increases are greater than seven percent and/or there are new proposed projects or initiatives that are funded through taxation. The other slides remain in the resource section of today's presentation materials, which were also published on our Have Your Say website. However, should there be any questions from the board today, we are happy to review any of those service area budgets. This slide lists the regional and subregional service area budgets which will be presented this afternoon. The preparation of a financial plan is a journey. It involves careful planning and a collaborative team while recognizing that those responsible for budget preparations have departments to run. This slide sheds some light on the preparation activities required in order for the budget managers to have the tools to efficiently and effectively develop their budgets. Training sessions are held, reference materials created and issued, and an operational support work plan assessment is conducted. Managers are supported by a regular budget communication tool to keep all posted on the status and what's ahead next. And that's not all. Once budgets are approved, there is a thorough review process before materials are brought to the board. The financial planning process is a phased approach. We have stage gates on certain budget groupings in order to be prepared to move to the next stage. Each stage is iterative and allows for the incorporation of feedback. This timeline is focused on the external facing review processes and does not show the operational funding support requirements that were confirmed by the board in September. This was first ten budgets, nor does it reflect the preparation activities covered on the previous slide. You'll note that by December, the Electoral Area Directors reviewed and confirmed seventy-two electoral area budgets, and by mid-December confirmed a further eight electoral area-wide budgets. Today's presentation was shared with municipal CFOs and discussion occurred based on the questions raised. After today, we can move into the final phase of public consultation where the public will have the opportunity to review the financial plan in its entirety. We will return to the board in March for approval. This year's financial plan marks the first in a formal asset management program, a year of expanded public engagement and a more fulsome and robust review and approval process for regional grants and aid. We are focused on making responsible choices to ensure a slow and predictable tax bill to avoid dramatic shockwaves in the future as much as possible. Fiscal responsibility remains at the forefront of the budget direction. We recognize it, we recognize the challenging economic times and remain focused on seeking external funding and prioritized prioritizing required spending over new initiatives. This financial plan, as I said earlier, marks the first, first budget under our new asset management program. Investments in our infrastructure are required now in order to responsibly manage our assets and the related services in order to provide predictable future levels of taxation. We continue to pay close attention to budgets with low levels of savings as our objective is to avoid dramatic spikes in taxation when infrastructure investments are ultimately required. The FBRD continues to be impacted by emergency events. Not all services are affected by this, however, staff time needs to be considered with those deliverables. A financial plan is a point in time. We do our best to effectively predict the FBRD's financial position. We know that inflation varies amongst sectors and remains a risk. New legislation ultimately brings about new requirements which have yet to be fully understood. Funding requests for emergency events remain outstanding, yet we are optimistic for approvals. Earlier in this presentation, I mentioned the iterative process of preparing the FBRD's financial plan. This year, we have expanded our public consultation to resemble this approach with a focus on education and transparency. Our Have Your Say public engagement platform was formally launched in September with a soft launch in August. A glossary of commonly used terms has been added, as well as a navigational tool for the budget materials. A survey was conducted, as well as ongoing opportunities for public feedback. So last year, our public consultation period was ten days, and we had a similar number of property owners engaged on that process. It was about ten or so. So this slide summarize summarizes visitors to this year's Have Your Say site, contributors, and the number of documents downloaded, all of which are tracking much better than in previous years. B C Assessment has a responsibility for property assessments, which are the basis of taxation. The FBRD's budget information includes property assessment values in order to provide tools for decision-makers to understand the impacts of decisions on the average residential property owner in a given service area. Unlike municipalities, which typically have one tax base, each of the one hundred and fourteen budgets has its own unique tax base. The bottom-line tax impact to a property owner depends on their specific property increases compared to other properties within that same tax base. It's also important to note that the FBRD does not experience windfalls when assessments increase. We receive the budget, the dollars that we budgeted. For this year's financial plan, due to the new B C Assessment System and the timing of when all data was received, we made the decision to use twenty twenty-three assessment data for estimating taxation impacts. Generally speaking, based on the changes in assessment for twenty twenty-four, which we've learned in, in January of this year, the estimated taxation impacts will be less than these presented in these, these materials today. As previous, as previously mentioned, this presentation bases the estimated taxation impacts on twenty twenty-three property assessments. Twenty twenty-four data has been released showing a shift from residential classes to utility classes or business other and, and other industry classes in both municipalities and electoral areas. Generally speaking, this is again another positive for residential property owners. So other property classes will be taking up more of the tax burden than residential's. This is an illustrative excerpt from our Have Your Say engagement platform, and the objective is to differentiate the roles and responsibilities of various organizations. And this slide is another graphical illustration from the Have Your Say site. It illustrates a property tax notice for a sample property in Electoral Area A showing the FBRD services as well as the taxes paid to other agencies. The FBRD financial planning process requires the board to approve the budgeted dollars required to maintain and operate its services. As you know, the board is not approving tax rates. So when the FBRD requisitions the provincial rural taxation branch or issues requisitions to member municipalities, it is for the dollars required and approved in this process. The FBRD financial planning process requires the board to approve the budgeted dollars required to maintain and operate its services. We provide estimated taxation impacts to inform yourselves, the decision-makers, on the expected taxation impacts for property owners. When considering a specific property's expected taxes, what is most important is how the property's assessed values change in relation to other properties within that specific sur service area or tax base. If a property's value increased less than the other properties in that tax base, taxes will likely decrease. Conversely, if a property experiences increases greater than the other properties in that tax base, taxes will increase more than others. Earlier in this presentation, I mentioned service areas with low reserve balances. Reserves are funds set aside for capital requirements, for example, asset replacement, and in some cases, major maintenance. Staff have identified a number of service area budgets that are considered at risk. These are budgets where notable financial risks exist and are greater than more common risks such as inflation. So the FBRD strives to maintain its assets in good condition and ensure that there is adequate funding available for scheduled as well as unplanned maintenance, repair, and replacement. Should a service area have a need greater than budget in a particular year, there would be a few steps taken. Depending on the urgency, a board budget amendment report would come forward, typically for items greater than ten thousand dollars, to authorize the spending. And then if the work is absolutely required and there is no budget available, the service area budget will end the year in what is called a deficit. By legislation, we are not permitted to carry a deficit. So we would need to increase taxation in the immediately following year to recover all of that deficit. So tools do exist for local governments to borrow emergency funds for these types of scenarios, though it's on a short-term basis. So regardless of paying for those funds in the immediate year or within a short-term borrowing term, both scenarios could be significant for some taxpayers, especially in those service areas where there's very few participants. So in the Electoral Area Budget Reviews, theoretical calculations of these scenarios were provided to illustrate the significant impacts that property owners could face. The FBRD is seeking to find that right level of funding to avoid these potentially devastating financial shockwaves by having slow and predictable tax increases to adequately save for its infrastructure requirements. So we have completed some early works on estimated asset replacement valuation and the level of funds that should be contributed to those savings accounts, um, if you will, on an annual basis in order to achieve a reasonable financial position for these service areas. A number of factors are considered in developing those recommendations for reserve contributions or savings, somewhat like a condominium's contingency fund. We do expect greater precision on lifecycle replacement costs once the asset management system is procured and implemented. In November twenty twenty-three, the board adopted the asset management policy. So this year marks the first financial plan under the FBRD's Asset Management Program. This slide includes two completed goals and two more on the horizon within that asset management program. In addition to these goals, the asset management policy requires the development and implementation of an asset management strategy. And we are looking forward to the investment and implementation of an asset management system to support these broad regional needs. This year also includes the first year of accounting for asset retirement obligations under a new accounting standard. The next three slides illustrate service areas that have been identified as assets at risk. While the Electoral Area Directors this year have supported replacement reserve contributions that are in line with expectations and requirements for the future, this only moves the dial, but doesn't immediately eliminate the risk. The first budget listed on this slide is for Combined nine-one-one, which is a regional service. And it's on this listing due to the rapidly declining call answer levy, call answer levy revenue. Um, as people stop using landlines, the, this revenue is rapidly declining. So this will be covered later this afternoon. And the other ones on this slide are, um, the first three. Um, the landfill and North Bend Sewer and Water, of course, in Electoral Area A, and Yale Water is in Electoral Area B. And, um, the, these service areas, Morris Valley is Electoral Area C, and East Popcom, of course, is an Electoral Area D, Rexford Creek, Electoral Area E, DeRoche Water, Area G, and then North Cultis Sewer is Electoral Area H. Okay. At this point, I'm going to pass the presentation over to Beth Klein to go through the financial summaries in each of those seven service area budgets. Thank you.
Ms. Lonsborough, before you do, I just want to check in and make sure, what's your preference? Would you like questions as they arise as the slides come? Is that probably the easiest way?
I think so. That would be great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Director Horn.
Apologies if this is a question that can't be answered today, and I'm quite happy to have an answer offline. Um, very familiar with your summary of what happens with assessed values. I know that in our community, there is a gigantic range this year from minus two to twenty-two percent increases. So, um, in those types of circumstances, we've traditionally asked our finance department what each one percent might equate to in a differential, and I, again, I know you may not have that answer at hand. But on those regional services or at some level, I think it would be interesting to know, um, the sort of, A, the range that we may be seeing in some areas, some of the extremes, and B, what the implications might be for folks at either end. So again, I'll, I'll leave that with you for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Horn. Director Castle.
Yes, thank you, uh, to the Chair of Staff, uh, on, I think it's one of the, maybe slide number three. It talks about, uh, the budgets will be presented for new proposed projects requiring funding and/or tax increases greater than seven percent. Are we seeing all of the regional budgets today or just the ones that are over seven percent?
Just the ones that are over seven percent. Thank you for the question.
Can I ask why seven percent was the number that we used?
Yeah, certainly. Um, thank you for the question, Director Castle. Um, when we looked at the range of, um, the, the level of increases, that we were really just cognizant of time and, and we picked seven as the, we, we didn't, if we went too low, like if we picked a three or four percent, it, it would be too many to talk about today. So we went to the seven percent range. So there is, there's not too much more than that is, other than time management and priority for that level of taxation. But we're happy to talk about the other ones.
Thank you. And just going back, Ms. Lonsborough, those are ones that are included in the full package. So if directors had any questions on any of the budgets, which all of the budgets are in your package, um, they, uh, from what I understand, the finance staff are happy to, to take questions on that, both today or, or, uh, offline after.
That's correct. Thank you.
Okay, so starting with our financial summaries, so for the first two slides, you will see the regional and subregional total requisition dollars in summary form. Um, we're going to start with our regional budget listing. So on the screen, you will see, um, all of our regional budgets. And there are eight. We will be talking about three of them today in detail. But as we said, they're all in your slide package. Um, so on the screen, you'll see, uh, twenty twenty-four tax requisition. This is total dollars required for this service in comparison to last year's tax requisition. And these are service areas that are taxed to all, uh, electoral areas and municipalities. On the screen, we have our subregional budgets. Um, so these subregional budgets, again, are a comparison between last year's tax requisition to this year's tax requisition. Um, we will be talking about four of these budgets in detail. And these ones are not taxed to all municipalities and electoral areas equally. Um, most of them have different tax bases. We have provided in the resource slides as well a breakdown on requisition to each municipality and each electoral area for each of these service areas. So diving in first to our regional service budgets. So the first one we'll talk about is our regional administration budget. This service area is for the administration of the regional board and the C O's office. For the five-year financial plan, there are three highlights we have on screen. Um, we have an increase for an amended twenty twenty-three budget. An asset management system, and we are in our final year of softening taxation with savings. So just to expand on these highlights, um, the increase for taxation on the amended budget. Last year, we had an amendment for, uh, regional administration tool that was purchased and ongoing cost with that. Um, in twenty twenty-three, it was funded by savings. So twenty twenty-four will be the first year of taxation for that tool. The asset management system, this is for the purchase and implementation of an asset management system, and that is starting partway through twenty twenty-four, spread over two years. And finally, the surplus that we are using, the savings that we're using to soften taxation, has been done for a few years now. Um, when we use certain savings to soften taxation, there is an expected spike in the, the end of that surplus use, and that is in twenty twenty-four now. For ongoing initiatives for this budget, um, we deal with the regional administration and the regional board. We also have the Cascade Community Forest and Policy Updates. Uh, we have a slide on that to talk about, as well as Asset Management Program. So looking at, um, just a couple of risks and challenges, as well as considerations for this budget. Um, within the service area, there is typically unanticipated consultant work and legal work. Um, considerations are that use of savings to soften taxation. It is leading to, um, a, a spike in taxation in twenty twenty-four. One of the items that we deal with in the regional administration budget is the partnership of the community forest. Um, this is operated with the District of Hope and Yale First Nations. There's a map on the screen there, and that is the FBRD area, and it's in Area B. Um, besides the partnership requirements, the FBRD receives the share of profits that are distributed equally between the partners. Um, they are to benefit youth and seniors, arts, culture, heritage, and recreation, as well as, as well as regional community. Um, we work with the Area B Director, um, to provide these funds through grants. And on the twenty twenty-four work plan, we are working towards updating the policy and procedures for these grants. And any questions?
Uh, yeah, sorry, Director Dixon, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. And thank you for your presentation. Um, I'm just to have a few questions about this Cascade Lower County Community Forest, so. Um, because I'm wondering sort of why it's a regional thing. Um, and what are some of the things that FBRD does with, uh, the share of the profits?
Yep, so we have, um, used the profits just to give out grants in Area B or in, um, the Area B area with Hope and Yale First Nations.
May I follow up?
Go ahead.
So all of us are paying into it, I'm assuming, because it's a regional, is, is that true?
There's no taxation impact.
So this one has no taxation, is it funded from, um, their, their profits or whatever? So our, but we are paying in staff time with that sort of, uh, I'm assuming.
Yeah, correct.
So how many Area B gets the, uh, grants then? And you don't have to answer that today, but I'm just really, I think if it is regional and, and we're all sort of paying in the staff time, and maybe there's another way to do, to work on that.
Yeah, thank you. I, some of that goes back to the establishment of it, um, way back when. So I think we'd have to look back, um, on, on how that, this, the, the program was established. Um, I don't know that we have the history of that today. Yep.
Director Barkman, go ahead.
Just, uh, a question on the regional budgets. Uh, the twenty-three was five point three and a projected seven point one, which is a difference of one point eight, which goes thirty-plus percent increase. What contributes to that large an increase? I see the numbers here. It's just what's driving that?
Uh, Director Barkman, you're talking about the one oh one budget? Yep, the regional administration.
Yep, so I can go through that in the next couple of slides here.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so diving right into that, actually. Um, so first looking at the twenty twenty-four proposed projects. So we have two slides here. Um, this first slide is newly proposed projects. Um, our second slide is, uh, five-year horizon, so other projects within the five-year plan that aren't legislatively required. Um, so the asset management system is, um, something that has come through the operational support budget. The total cost was estimated to be around three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Um, this includes the purchase of the system, completing a needs assessment, and implementation of the software to our current systems. Um, so we have spread it across two years, two hundred, around two hundred and eighty thousand dollars being in twenty twenty-four. Um, we do have a, a little bit of savings used to soften that, however, most of it is through taxation. Some background on the asset management system, I know Kelly touched on it a bit already. Um, we, staff have been working through the strategic goals the last couple of years. So in twenty twenty-three, we completed an updated appraisal for our assets, which was used for insurance purposes, as well as risk management, and was used to build an Excel document as a starting point for a more detailed, um, asset register for financial reporting and for lifecycle replacement calculations. So these calculations are used to calculate savings in our budget and treasury impacts each year. The Excel sheet is also used for calculating our newly required accounting standard for recognizing asset retirement obligations. To keep the Excel file updated each year, finance is required to work with other departments to manually enter any new data for additions, disposals, adjustments. They're all entered separately and They're all entered separately into our financial system for financial reporting. And they are also having to be entered into an Excel sheet outside of that. In addition to this reporting that we have to do for financial statements, um, we have to enter, or we have to report out to multiple entities on asset information, such as Stats Canada, Ministry for Financial Reporting, and some grants such as C W F. All of these report requirements are moving each year to require significant details that our financial reporting tool doesn't house, such as length of pipe, um, condition of the assets. The goal of the asset management system is to integrate financial data with our G I S data and lifecycle replacement data all in one spot, lessening the manual entries that are required into multiple systems throughout the year. Looking over the five-year horizon, we have shown that twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, the total estimated cost will be around three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Um, in addition, we've, and we've added a government frameworks program, I'm used to calling it Cascade. Um, this is a new software as of twenty twenty-three. There are software and ongoing software fees and training fees around seventy thousand dollars each year, and twenty twenty-four is the first year we're taxing for that system. So getting to um, the rest of the increase here, so on the screen is the, it's a, the full budget for the one oh one in a summarized form. Um, it looks like an income statement, if anyone looks at income statements. Um, the top section there is where all the funding comes in, and the bottom section is where all of our expenses flow out. Um, on the right, we have our savings, and each of the budgets that we look, look at today will have the same summary. Don't think it's a pointer, but in the top, the third, the top row is the requisition dollars, and that's what you'll see in that, um, this first summary we looked at. The transfer from savings is that last year of using savings, it's around a hundred fifteen thousand dollars. And if you look on the right here, you can see that we've depleted the savings in twenty twenty-four. So we can't use anymore to soften that, um, that tax.
Okay, we've got a few questions here. Director Horn, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just following up on the question from Director Dixon. Um, further questions? Uh, and I, again, I'm, I'm quite happy to have this information provided later and, and for consideration before the actual bylaw comes before us. The first question I have is, to what extent is uh, the administration component of the Cascade Lower Canyon Community Forest driving um, any changes in the administration budget? That, that information would be useful. And secondarily, um, is there an opportunity uh, within that municipal forest agreement to uh, a change or, or with the, is there a mechanism for us over the next even year as a group here to look at whether the overhead, uh, the administrative overhead portion could be uh, refund, funded differently from revenue here? Uh, Council, Director Dixon raised one option of looking at um, disbursement of grants. I'm assuming there's not a ton of money to do that. But if, if there's a, a way for um, the overhead to fund at least a third that comes from this organization, um, I'd be interested in looking at that, uh, so that it's partitioned as most of our financing is. So we'll leave that with you for future consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Director Davidson, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Just a question on the asset management system. Um, you put out, I think, two hundred and eighty K is the twenty twenty-four budget. Uh, implementation of these kinds of systems can span multiple years, depending how you phrase it. I'm just curious what the projected cost for implementation, staff training, configuration, analysis, et cetera. Um, everything the, above and beyond operation uh, is looking like for years subsequent to twenty twenty-four?
Yeah, so we have included all of that in that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Director, uh, Reed.
Thank you, Chair Lam. Uh, thank you for the presentation. Just a question around the asset management system and what you sort of expect the time savings is going to be, because recognizing that um, the new administration, you know, obviously takes time to implement, but also um, going through a manual system to a computer-based system must be a great savings for all of that areas too.
Yeah, I haven't quantified the savings at this point. Um, but the more that we go through these reporting to different entities, it's, it's adding time. Um, so I think this year, actually in twenty twenty-four, our financial reporting to the ministry is um, it previous that it's been an option to include these things like length of pipe, um, what type of pipe you have in the ground. Uh, but as of twenty twenty-four, we have to have it now. So there's a few reports that have been coming up. We had a new, one new one for Stats Canada. I think we put in about four hours putting it together, because we have to pull it from different areas. Um, I haven't quantified it at this point, but those are a few things that, that come up.
Um, it, it, thank you. And in addition to that, I would say that doing that point in time um, refresh, and we did the property appraisal. That was about the first time in about nine years, the organization did the property appraisals that your team worked collaboratively with others in the organization to update our records, but wasn't that in the, the weeks? Like, uh, like, and it was a point in time, so all that law, all that is outdated immediately. So when you get to your year end, you have to refresh it every single time. As there's new disposals, there's new procurement, um, things happen. So none of that's automated, it's all manual.
Director Jason.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I also had a question about the asset management system. I was just wanting clarification on, you mentioned pipes, but like other examples of what, what those assets are, and just to confirm they're in electoral areas as well as municipalities, or do you kind of know where or how that balances out between the two?
Uh, yep, so pipes come to mind because I have to report on that. Um, we have uh, fixed assets in animal control facility, which is a subregional. Um, as well as the Hope Rec Center is a big one that have, has lots of lifecycle replacements. Um, the campgrounds, uh, parks, all of them, yeah. They're, they're dispersed quite significantly.
So it's a combination, it's a combination of, of assets that would be uh, both in municipal areas, but also across the region. Is it fair to say that uh, the majority would be in electoral areas? Is that a fair statement or maybe unfair?
Um, it depends how you look at it, I guess. Um, there is quite a significant amount in, in electoral areas because of the sewer and water systems. But we do have subregional systems like the Hope Rec Center that are quite significant in, in value.
Thank you. Director Castle. Thank you, Chair Lam. Um, just looking for some clarity, putting together some of the things, answers from other directors. Uh, the two hundred and eighty is to purchase the asset management system, the three hundred and fifty is to implement it?
Um, three hundred and fifty is the total value, so two hundred and eighty is um, what we consider to be um, in purchase of the system in twenty twenty-four, as well as um, a partial piece of implementing it.
Thank you. And so when we see an increase, overall increase in tax requisition here of five hundred and sixty-five thousand for this one budget, um, we can attribute most of that increase to the ass, the, the purchase and implementation of the asset management system?
Yeah, a portion of it is. Um, another portion is the increase for um, the regional tool that was purchased last year, as well as inflation costs, um, wage increases, all of the operational support items.
Thank you. And if I may, one more. So when I'm looking at the screen in, in front of us, and we see salaries, benefits, and operational support, we've got about a four hundred thousand dollar increase there. Again, that's attributed to that asset management?
Um, partially, and partially it's contributed to the overall operational support increase.
Okay, thank you. Director Jason.
Thank you. One more question, just wondering this um, item number, so the regional administration. Can you unpack how it, how that, I'm maybe getting ahead of myself, but how it gets divided? How, what, how does that get split up between them all? I know it's later on, there's more detail, but can you, maybe since we're talking about it, how, how that works?
For sure. Um, so this service area is based on assessment, so it's split between municipalities and electoral areas based on assessment, assessed value.
And perhaps um, I, I flipped ahead during the, the presentation. Um, looking at all the electoral areas and the municipalities, it, it, on average, it's between two to four dollars of an increase uh, per re, per residential taxpayer in each of those areas in each municipality. So it, it's two to four dollars-ish.
Okay. Okay, I don't see, oh, Director Dixon, go ahead.
A late buzzer. Um, back to the asset management plan, just uh, I'm really trying, struggling to understand a little bit, but is the expectation is that down the road that there will be cost savings because we um, or time savings, I guess at least, because uh, we're implementing this system?
Yeah, definitely time savings for staff time, um, and reporting out.
And less room forever.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Director Dixon. Next, uh, I, I think we'll continue on, then I don't see any other questions.
Okay, so our next service area is the combined E nine one one, and this is one of our service areas that we consider a budget at risk. So the purpose of this service area is for the initial nine one one call handling. Um, key highlights of the five-year plan are we are utilizing property tax to offset the declining call answer levy as of twenty twenty-four. Ongoing initiatives for the service area, ECOM nine one one is preparing the transition for the next gen nine one one in twenty twenty-five. Because we'll be going through both the combined E nine one one and the fire dispatch budgets, I just want to uh, explain the differences between the two. Um, so the one that we're talking about right now is, is service area two four six, it's combined E nine one one on the left. This is for the initial call handling before it is um, dispatched. It's the primary, primary answer, and it's provided by ECOM nine one one. It's funded currently by call answer levies and savings, um, and in twenty twenty-four will be our first year of required taxation. The next budget we'll be talking about is the fire dispatch, it's areas two four seven, and this is specific to fire dispatching and radio networking. Um, so the call goes to, through the E nine one one, and then if it is for fire, it gets dispatched to fire through the two four seven. It's also provided by ECOM nine one one, um, and it's funded by tax requisition. So speaking specifically about the E nine one one, budget risks and challenges. The service area is funded by the call answer levy on landlines, and as they decrease, so does the service area funding. And we have been using savings to, to soften or to not have to tax for this area. We are expecting the call answer levy revenue to continue to decline. Other considerations for the service area. It does allow for taxation currently by bylaw. We haven't implemented it until twenty twenty-four. Um, U B C M and others have requested the province to establish call answer levies for cell phones. If a call answer levy on the cellphone is established, we can reduce taxation in the future. And next gen nine one one is expected to increase service costs. So looking at the budget here, you can see in twenty twenty-four, we're bringing in four hundred thousand dollars of taxation. Um, we do hope to keep some savings in um, our savings account, just because we don't know what the results will be each year for the call answer levy. As we said, they're continuing to decline. Um, we are forced to tax in twenty twenty-four, as there won't be enough savings to uh, to stop that. There are no questions, I can keep going. No question.
Director Dixon, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, it, obviously I find this disturbing, I understand it. I mean, I have families that can't afford food. And uh, this one and, and the next one, we'll have different questions there. If I look at this member tax requisition, it, it appears to be uh, you know, by twenty twenty, it gets doubled. It, it, can you explain why? So I understand that if this call levy comes through the province, um, finally decides to do that, um, that, that, that that will change, but I'm assuming obviously this is just, just in case, but um, it, I guess, so it, the, the way I'm looking at this, it will cost us four hundred thousand dollars uh, in twenty twenty-four, but by twenty twenty, it's eight hundred thousand. So I'm just kind of curious where
Yeah.
that came from.
So in this line here is our contract fees for ECOM nine one one, and you can see they're increasing to around a million dollars in twenty twenty-eight. We're using a trend to show the declining nine one one call answer levy. Um, so it is estimated based on prior year results. In the comparison between the two, that's the difference in taxation.
Just a point of privilege, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Um, I don't know if others felt it, but the building was shaking a few moments ago, and just a question to our staff. Is that um, something that's common in the design of the building, or something that we might need to be concerned about?
Uh, thank you to the Chair, to uh, Director Horn. Uh, it is not uncommon in this building for us to uh, notice when the train goes by. So I can't particularly tell if that just happened, but I suspect that's what you felt. Uh, there have been many times sitting on the fourth floor here where you felt the gentle rocking, wondering if there was an earthquake, but in fact, it was just the train.
Thank you very much. Every once in a while, by age, I start to wonder if it's just me who's experiencing it, and that's another option.
I thought it was budget nerves.
I was just looking at Director Clute to see if he was gonna drop under the decks, the desk. Yeah.
But for the committee, thank you for bringing that up. At some point in the near future, we will run through you, through a safety drill, and so that everyone knows what to do in the event of an emergency. It's a good reminder. Thank you.
Director Wardenburg.
Uh, yeah, thank you. Um, just a quick question as far as um, the cellphone levy. Is there an indication of a timeline from the province for an answer on that?
Thank you for the question. Um, no, um, this has come up, I mean, there's not much, I wish, I wish we knew. Um, you know, it, as recently as September twenty twenty-three, it was raised um, through U B C M. Um, it is a hot topic amongst other regional districts, um, but I do, do not have um, an, an estimate of when.
For fifteen years, Director Wardenburg, I've asked that uh, question, and I know for many years before I was around, uh, people were asking that question. They kept forecasting the depletion of these uh, levies as people transitioned away from landlines. But uh, simply uh, nothing has been done. From what I understand, the big uh, the big carriers um, had indicated that they were open to uh, some level of, of, of levy. Um, and I think, you know, there's, there's a combination of players at table, it's obviously there's federal um, implications, um, but certainly it's not a surprise to anybody as we see this, and you know, anybody looking at this will just see that uh, everything that's transpiring right now in twenty twenty-four is exactly what we said was gonna happen back, you know, ten, twelve years ago. As uh, as those um, levies depleted, and uh, we started to see this shift turn more towards reliance on, on taxation, so uh, it's unfortunate. Um, it, this may be a bit of a rallying cry for other uh, communities and regional districts as they see this really come to fruition, the rubber hits the road, and you start to see this affecting your your financials right now, and, and, and see the uh, the levies uh, almost completely depleted, but or, or not, certainly not sufficient to cover the, the contracted services that we're uh, involved in, but but I don't know. I would, I would anticipate this isn't yet another topic of discussion this year at the U B C M. Uh, Director Gill, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Director. I, I guess, the, just to follow up on that question, when was the last time correspondence went uh, from your office, Chair Lam? Um, or would that even help?
Yeah, no, I think it does help. Um, I think um, as recently as a couple of years ago, we sent some, some information in when we were talking about um, N G nine one one. We always include We always include um information about our, the risk with the call answer levy uh depleting. But um certainly, I think, you know, some combined advocacy is appropriate coming into the U B C M this year. Go ahead, Ms. Clute.
So next we have our regional fire dispatch. So the purpose of the service area is for regional fire dispatch as well as fire dispatch radio network. The key highlights of this plan, the fire dispatch cost increased thirty six percent. Um, this was due to increased call volumes as well as contractor prices. Radio network assessment and tenure maintenance plan, as well as the radio network improvements are also included in this five-year plan. Ongoing initiatives, again, Ecom nine one one preparing for our next gen nine one one. Um, as well as working towards maintaining the integrity of the radio network. Risk and challenges for the service area um are the increased service costs for Ecom nine one one. The radio network is mid lifespan and replacement costs are unknown at this time. Requirements for radio network to support growing communities are unknown, as well as the the transition to next gen nine one one. Isn't in expected to increase fire dispatch costs due to a provincial grant. So on the next two slides, we have um, I believe, two years of proposed projects. All of these projects are grant funded at this point, so we have G I S consultant in twenty twenty four. Radio network assessment in twenty twenty four. Moving into twenty twenty five, we have our Shiam primary radio site. As well as the replacement of backup interconnects, Eagle Mountain monitoring and radio recorder replacement. And we can answer any questions on these projects if there are any.
Questions. Director Dixon.
Thank you. Um. It's not, so, so the projects that are are growing community funds, um funded five hundred forty three thousand such. Uh, but are those included in the increase of over seven hundred thousand, or is that, where did I see that? Um, I think I saw that in the member tax requisition. Is that, are those included in there, or is that member tax requisition for twenty twenty four just to cover the thirty six percent increase in? Ecom and the radio networks, like.
We have accounted for the grounds, grants in the budget, so they wouldn't be attributable to the increase. It would be mainly because of the consult or contract fees.
So no.
Okay, so, so we were actually taxing seven hundred thousand. Your tax requisition.
The tax requisition isn't for these projects, it's for the cons, the the contractor fees of Ecom.
Are you, Director Dixon, are you looking for the amount that they're taxing? Are you, you're referencing a seven hundred?
Well, okay, when I look at, it's the next, it's the next slide.
Oh, next slide, okay.
So it says member tax requisition, and you've got two thousand seven, two million seven, that one. So that's an increase, more or less of seven hundred and something or other. So that's the part that I'm trying to find out what's in that increase. Uh, is it, what, what is that covering? And are these projects, the proposed projects, over and above that?
Yes, so the increase is showing here. So this is that where the Ecom nine one one contract fee comes in. Um, that's a large portion of the increase in taxation. The projects that were listed on the screen are not included in taxation. They're funded by grants, so they're separate.
It would only happen, um, Miss Klein, if we obtained the grant. Is that correct?
Um, these ones.
Or they're G C F money, so they are, they're accounted for, sorry.
Sorry for the second time today, a follow-up on something Director Dixon's raised. I'm still confused is the summary of the question. Because consulting and legal itself does not give us a a big window into what is basically eight hundred thousand dollars difference there from what I'm seeing. So can staff give a bit more input? Um, I'm hearing contract, I just don't know how that fits under that line item title.
That, that's the fees we pay to Ecom. So our, our fees have gone up by about thirty six percent. Um, through our contract with Ecom, and that's uh largely their cost increases as well as it's driven by our, our number of calls. So the calls have increased.
So maybe you're just talking about the title of that line item, maybe including contracts, consulting and legal. Well, we're just.
Yes, thank you. Yes.
Good. We're not spending a whole bunch of extra money on uh lawyers, okay? We are spending additional money on legal, but not that one.
Yes, thank you. That's, that is, uh, that's an oversight. We, we try to be consistent amongst our slides, but that one should have contractors in there. Yep.
All good. Director Mark, go ahead.
It's ju- just a question on the risk and challenges and part of the thirty six percent increase. Then you go through some of the other. Um, bullet points there, costs unknown, radio support growing communities unknown. And the last one, not expected to increase. How do we? Budget or how do we look down the road with these kinds of uncertainties? Because thirty six percent is a large increase.
I can't speak for finance staff, but I know we've been asking for details continually around N G nine one one. And what that might do for the technology requirements for the regional district, for dispatch, for some of the things that we utilize here. And as far as I know, and I hope I'm not stepping out of line here, they haven't been as forthcoming with what the demand might be on the new technology. Because this implementation isn't done yet, so it's not that we don't want to know. I think, I think our staff have been. Trying to find out and and discern what some of those costs may be. But largely, the, the, the upgrades and some of the other stuff that's gonna be driven by this uh N G nine one one shift. Is gonna be out of our hands, and we're gonna be, we're gonna be put in a position, I think, that's a little bit reactionary, which is not a position we want to be in. But it's certainly something we've tried to convey to the contractor and to the province around. What are these costs that we're gonna be born in upgrading our systems to uh be uh um. To be compatible with uh the new systems that you guys are putting in place. I, um, Ms. Longsborough.
Yes, thank you. That is correct. Um, and in addition. It's important to point out that the radio infrastructure is owned by the F P R D and managed by the F P R D. Um, we have uh some certain areas where there's challenges in uh in reception. Um, and it it's midlife. These are significant pieces of in- infrastructure, so we have it on our work plan to do an overall assessment. Um, you know, in previous years, we had looked at, uh, oh, you know, in in three or four years, you're gonna need to replace this piece of infrastructure, this piece. We're gonna stop and do a pause and have a holistic review by a network analyst. Um, and and outside engineer to really a- assess where we're at so that we have that good lifecycle replacement. Um, as well as, and then we, we have to anticipate and layer on the, the next gen nine one one impacts.
Thank you. Uh, let's continue on.
Okay, so that was the end of our regional budgets. Next, we're moving into our subregional service budgets. Um, so starting with transit. We will go over two of the service area budgets, however. Just wanted to highlight, um, we do have three transit budgets at the F P R D, and um this slide does refer to all three. So the transit funding breakdown, so B C Transit funds forty six, almost forty seven percent of the conventional transit systems. And sixty seven percent of the custom systems, so the handy art systems, um, local governments fund the remainder of it. B C Transit invoices local governments on actual costs, so operating costs of fuel and maintenance, um, and they are fluctuating over time. The F P R D and local governments use the revenue that are, that is collected um to reduce the property tax share of that costs. Looking at the budget risks and challenges, overarching bus- budget risks and challenges are the increasing fuel and operating costs. As well as the end of the safe restart funding supports provided to offset COVID nineteen costs. Moving into twenty twenty four, they'll be implementing the U M O electronic fare system, so there will be technology cost increases in that area. As well as in twenty twenty seven, um, a new transit facility, at this time costs are unknown. And finally, the new transit operating collective agreement. So looking specifically at our transit budget for.
Gonna pause on this one, because I see we've got a couple of questions. Sorry, Director Gibson, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, thank you. The uh facility in Chilowack, when that's finally constructed, what will be the ratio or the funding formula be for that facility?
Ms. Klein, not sure uh. How much of that is utilized regionally? And how much is used uh for the local system?
I think Allison can answer that first.
Ms. Stewart?
Uh, through the chair, this is a um Chilowack and the F E R D um. Facility, so we're working closely with the city of Chilowack as the, as B C Transit goes through this process. Where the city of Abbotsford may see that uh connection or will see that connection. Will be with the Fraser Valley Express budget, so it'll be incorporated in that. And my understanding it will be um based on the service hour costs. That will be how the costs will be um distributed across the services.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I, I suppose it would be um prudent to know what the formula is earlier rather than later.
Uh, yeah, and there is a, we have a um cost allocation for what, how much each of the municipalities requisition for the F E X service, correct? So I guess in effect, what Ms. Stewart's saying is you know the formula already. Or we can definitely get you that formula, for sure.
Yeah, and through the chair, we just don't know what the costs are actually gonna be.
How much they'll allocate to the capital.
Something that's in motion, so once we get a better understanding of what the costs will be, we will be sharing that at the appropriate time.
And they would allocate that towards like storage of the buses that are utilized in the F E X, like maintenance, pieces of the maintenance bay that would be utilized for F E X, those kind of things, is that? Fair to say?
Yes, that's what the costs are allocated on a service hour basis.
And right now, uh, I think there's a storage facility or a B C Transit facility in Abbotsford at the end of the, the highway. And we, we would pay a portion, a, a, a piece of that would be a portion if it's utilized by the F E X or no?
Uh, no, the F E X, um.
All located in Chilowack?
It's primarily located in, in Chilowack, I think for some buses right now, because we have some additional trips going just from Abbotsford into. Um, um, Burnaby, um, they're using the Abbot's Garage, so there may be some costs allocated from that. Um, but it is very much, um, for each service, it's allocated separately by the, the service hours.
I know the Chilowack facility has been bursting out the seams right now, which is why they're trying to find another suitable location for it, and they've been trying for a while, so.
Uh, Director Horn.
Uh, first, let me say I find it incredibly amusing to see suddenly a transcription show up on the screen. The teenager in me found it amazing that Abbotsford was transcribed into Amsterdam. And don't ask me to be more rational than that, I just thought it was amusing. Um, my question, Mr. Chair, uh, followed by a comment is. Uh, help me if you can, um, to understand how the region has been involved, if at all, in transit improvement planning. I know that at city level, we would have transit come out, work with us on the three-year plan. Is there also a component of that that's done here? Or are we waiting for each of the cities to update their three-year tips at this point?
Sounds like a Ms. Stewart, uh, question?
Uh, through the chair, um, the three-year tip was brought forward earlier this year. And where we, um, so we were, we're working with B C Transit um on implementing that. I think um the F E X expansion is one of those things that was approved by the board at that time. So we do work very closely with B C Transit. Um, we're in discussions on some planning work on north side of the Fraser, for example. So we're working very closely with them to complete the feasibility study and start engagement. Um, there'll be more information on that coming forward shortly, but we're, we're regularly in discussions uh with B C Transit.
Thank you. And my follow-up comment would be, I, I, I think of, at least in my municipality, our current three-year tip as a placeholder. For, for two reasons. So much was frozen, everything we had planned in the last year, last three-year one. Simply was unfunded at the provincial level, and so. We've been left with the question, do we just pick up where we left off and assume that we're moving that plan forward three years? Speaking with Mr. Ringma and B C Transit, that is not, I think, the long-term view of things. I think we all know that the new three pieces of housing legislation are also going to impact transit usership. And finally, I know that B C Transit has um asked for and been encouraged by the province to make some significant. Capital requests, so I expect we're gonna have buses, which means we'll have operational expenses at our level. So to my colleagues around the table, I, I think two things might be in order. One's a suggestion, the other's a possibly a direction we might take. A suggestion is that at each of our municipal levels, we, uh, we've already asked Mr. Ringma to come to Mission and to work with us on our tip, so we have. More current information and then can look more accurately to the future for the next three years. Because I'm worried we're not, I'm worried we're gonna have a big shock here. Um, and then the second one is we might. Ask Mr. Ringma to come to this table and just at a different evening, give us an update on what's going on right now with transit. Because I think it's, it's changing quickly, especially as I said, in view of how the province is moving around transit-oriented areas.
Yeah, I think that's a great direction, and I think we should, uh, I think we'd always, I always, um. Uh, like to have Mr. Ringman or a representative from B C Transit when we can. And I know, uh, all throughout our transit future planning, um, exercise in the city of Chilowack at least, we had good coordination between uh Mr. Ringma. What, what was happening with the regional district and all of the kind of different uh interconnected kind of uh system that we have, you know, aligning things as best we can. Amongst the systems, so, so it can make sense and really provide a good user experience at the end of the day. But you, very good advice. Uh, go ahead.
Okay, so looking specifically at the transit line that involves area D, Chilowack, Kent and Harrison. The purpose of this um service area is providing the transit service between those areas. Key highlights of the five-year plan are really to maintain the service levels. Um, there is no scheduled expansion for this line. Ongoing initiatives are exploring the connection between Agassi and Mission, um, ongoing discussions. As well as ongoing assessment of ridership and revenue growth to determine expansion priorities for Chilowack and F P R D Transit Future Action Plan. Other considerations are the utilization of savings from prior years to offset increased operating costs. And so you can see. Here, um, we are bringing in savings to offset those costs at this point. Um, again, when, when we look at the savings accumulated balance at the end of twenty twenty eight, it's at a hundred and sixty three thousand.
Can I ask, oh, sorry, uh, Director Castle, go ahead.
Thanks, Chair Lam. Uh, through to staff, uh, when the Agassi to Mission comes through. Will that create a new service area, or will those electoral areas be added to this service area?
Through the chair, that's something that needs to be determined as we go through this process. Um, it is. It is getting very complicated with three different um services with one region, so it's, um. I think as we go through that process, that may well be some sort of discussion to have.
And I believe the last time that B C Transit was in, they were looking at twenty twenty five as potentially when that might come online. Is that? Accurate?
Again, through the chair, that will really depend on the, the process that we go through. There's certainly. An interest on the part of the province to provide funding, but we do have to fully understand the costs. And we also have to determine who wants to contribute to that service. So ultimately, these are the types of discussions that will take place once the feasibility. So ultimately, these are the types of discussions that will take place once the feasibility study is completed, which hopefully will be fairly soon. We're we're actively engaging B C Transit on this um, as we speak.
Awesome, thank you.
Director Horton, go ahead.
Yeah, I I'll just simply invite Director Castle to chat with me more offline about some of the conversations we have. But that's probably the reason why I think uh, Director uh, Pranger and I have been chatting. And of course, your, our communities are in between there. Um, but I think we have to get Mr. Ringman in the room and then there are other implications that would um, be best for a conversation. Um, just on a personal level, um, and um, and I'm happy to do that.
Ms. Klein on this, uh, oh, sorry, Director Dicky, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just curious um, whether there's an ongoing survey of the ridership um, for these services. Is that something that's done annually or is it uh, at a lesser time period?
Through the chair, um, there's uh, with the, over the last number of years with the 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 challenges of COVID and and other things, um, that sort of analysis hasn't really happened. However, with the new technologies and the new UMO technologies, we'll actually have got a much better understanding of ridership and be able to do more analysis of people who are actually using the system. So that's definitely something that we were interested in. I certainly want to have a better understanding of children under thirteen using that service to ensure that we're being properly compensated and um, that that's been a bit of a concern with that shift away um, from um, I guess it was two or three years ago when the province introduced pre-transit for uh, children under the age of thirteen.
Good, thank you. And just if I could follow up.
Go ahead.
So the, this UMO uh, statistics um, would break down how much ridership from each community would be um, taking place?
Yes, that's, it's a much higher um, level of um, accuracy than in the past. So we're really looking forward to seeing um, the top technology rollout and uh, be able to get in, really get into the numbers.
Good, thank you.
I guess you can make some, some kind of high-level assumptions just by looking at the revenue. Um, the ridership revenue on this, and it doesn't look like the ridership revenue is is dropping or or baselining on this. From what I understand about the system, it's fairly well utilized. I have a question about the tax requisition on this. Is this by assessment? Well, how is the tax appropriated on this? Because there's a couple of municipal partners on this, correct?
Um, this one isn't on assessment. It's a percentage.
Okay.
Based in the bylaw.
Okay, thanks. Uh, sorry, Director Dabo.
Uh, thanks very much to the Chair to Staff. The portion that shows EA Transit funding of fourteen-one every year fairly consistently throughout the five-year plan. Um, Area B doesn't have access to any of this transportation service. What percentage of that do we actually pay? If that's available.
Zero, isn't it? Who's who's involved in this service, three oh six?
Yeah, this one's Area D, Chilliwack, Kent and Harrison.
Okay, so where it says elected area transit funding, that's not us. That's only that area. Okay, my apologies. Thank you.
You, I was right. Uh, continue on.
Okay, so the next one is the transit for Hope. So this is the transit service um, within Hope and along Highway Seven between Hope and Agassi. Um, key highlights of this plan are catching up on operation, operating costs increased from previous years. Um, there's no scheduled expansions. Ongoing initiatives here are the ongoing assessment of ridership and revenue growth to determine Hope expansion priorities for Chilliwack or through the Chilliwack and F E R D Transit Future Action Plan. Budget risks and challenges for this specific line. Um, it is sensitive to high fuel and maintenance and other operating costs due to the distance traveled. Other considerations, the new transit facility will support an electric bus fleet, which when implemented, may reduce operating costs tied to fuel costs. Um, this is utilizing savings from prior years to offset those operating costs. And additional revenues realized from providing services to First Nations are in this budget as well.
And Ms. Klein, this uh, this transit, the transit facility you referred to in this line item is the Chilliwack one as well. So all of these regional, there are these sub-regional buses are housed in Chilliwack?
I believe so. Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So looking at the budget here, um, you can see we're bringing in twenty-two thousand dollars of savings in two thousand and twenty-four, which depletes the savings down to ten thousand dollars.
Thank you. Uh, Director Gibson, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I noticed with interest uh, in these two uh, service areas that we're providing uh, services to First Nations, which of course, uh, it's important that we have a cordial relationship with our First Nations friends. Uh, Mike Furry is however, uh, given that they're a nation, my my assumption is this must be matched funding. Or they're uh, supporting um, these transit uh, initiatives uh, with funds of their own. They were not exclusively funding First Nations, but this is a partnership. Is that my understanding?
Are those fees on the revenue line? Um, um, the ser- the service fee that they would uh, contribute? Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, this is this, this is the the funding that is from those First Nations, yeah.
That's revenue. So it's coming from, so they're paying a fee for service. There, that's their contribution.
Correct. Okay, so moving on to our um, regional parks. So this is all areas except for Abbotsford. Um, there are nine regional parks and three regional trails that are in this service area. And the key highlights of this plan are really inflation affecting operational costs. Ongoing initiatives are asset management planning as well as planning for future parks, trails and other initiatives. Budget risks and challenges for this service area are the rising cost of labor, supplies and infrastructure projects. There's an increasing demand for services in parks and recreation, um, as well as considering the climate change anomalies. Other considerations, there's an ongoing review needed of resource requirements to reflect operational costs, asset replacement planning and customer needs. Alignment of future opportunities with community aspirations. Um, and a note that there's savings for parkland acquisition at this point are not adequate. So looking at the two thousand and twenty-four proposed projects and initiatives slide, there are two on the screen. So we have track lifecycle replacement as well as staff safety devices. Looking forward at the five-year horizon, we have um, included in the two thousand and twenty-four capital projects are some carryforwards from prior years. So including the prior slide um, of the eighty-five thousand dollars as well as other projects like the K V R Trail and picnic shelters. In two thousand and twenty-five, the, there is dog park improvements, um, as well as the strategic plan for regional parks. Um, some trail erosion repair in two thousand and twenty-five and two thousand and twenty-seven. Two thousand and twenty-five and two thousand and twenty-eight upgrades to the Island Twenty-Two Bike Park, as well as Cascade Falls um, re-decking in two thousand and twenty-six. So most of those projects are funded from savings um, and reserve. So this is our first slide seen reserve funding. So just to clarify, um, these are all different savings accounts that we have in this budget. Our first split line here is called reserve savings. It is used typically for major maintenance and capital projects. And it is um, based on bylaw. We have some land savings. So this parkland acquisition fund, um, at the end of two thousand and twenty-eight, we have around six hundred thousand dollars, um, which is not adequate before purchasing land at this point. And some surplus savings, this is, this can be used for operating as well as capital. And so you can see here, we're bringing in funding each year to fund those projects that have been on the prior slides. Um, the main increase in this area is due to contract increases as well as consulting. So you can see that big jump between two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four.
Uh, Director Horn, go ahead.
Yes, just a question about how we arrive at our surplus um, contributions, or sorry, our reserve contributions every year. Um, I'm familiar with um, a model where you're taking a set percentage every year and doing that. It seems to me that that would give us some comfort. Looking here, I see that the number fluctuates downward, so I know we're not doing that. How do we arrive at that number and have staff considered a set percentage of uh, moving to reserve?
So currently, we don't have a policy that's corporate-wide on those set percentages. Um, it is based on the manager's lifecycle replacement um, and savings requirements at this point. Um, on the two thousand and twenty-four work plan is our capital reserve policy and that will um, dictate that.
Thank you. I, to wrap up, then I'd be very interested at the point of considering of the bylaw here, whether staff and your finance group uh, has a recommendation around that um, moving forward. Because I don't know, um, everybody else has noticed, but land's not getting any cheaper. And so it seems to me that we should be thinking ahead towards um, uh, acquisition in a more orderly way.
Director Barkman, just a question. When would it be appropriate to ask your question concerning uh, regional parks that would uh, affect Abbotsford? Is it coming up in the presentation?
Uh, we're not going into detail, but we can, we can go to those slides after, um, we get through these ones if you'd like.
So I'll just give you a heads up. It's to do with a boat launch.
Thank you, Director Barkman. Um, on this uh, particular slide, so and I would say that the parkland acquisition budget is probably artificially um, low and that doesn't represent um, the, the, the benefits of having like a cash injection from municipality to acquire um, part, additional parkland. And I'm just referencing, you know, some of the work that the city of Chilliwack has done. In addition to this budget, we've contributed um, a a pretty significant amount far in excess of that whole five-year savings to acquire um, park, parkland that would become regional parks in the, in the F E R D. So uh, Director Horn, if Mission wants, it wouldn't preclude Mission from uh, putting a ca- a a one-time cash injection in him either. So if he wanted to, uh, we're, we're totally open to that as well.
I think that's, I was thinking of that exact situation as I was suggesting that perhaps we'd look at a set reserve so that we don't wait for um, one municipality's goodwill when an opportunity becomes uh, comes before us.
I say it a little bit in jest, but you know, I think um, it's, it's easy for me to rationalize that. These are assets um, that I I think are wonderful for the, for the region. They're well utilized by both citizens of Chilliwack and and the region as well. Just like I enjoy uh, going to the regional parks in each of, each of the other areas of the F E R D. And I'm just as happy to, to contribute as a, as a, as a Chilliwackian. Um, they're great for, they're great for all of us, so. Uh, Ms. Kennedy?
Sure, I just wanted to remind the board that in the current strategic plan is the development of a regional parkland acquisition strategy. So you will be seeing that in this board term.
Thank you. And part of that strat planning, I think, lift in contract services and consultants is probably what you see in that twenty-four, twenty-five. Is that fair to assume some of that increase is in there with the strategic plan project? The one that was identified uh, previous in the previous slide, I think is a hundred thousand dollars of um, strategic planning?
I believe the hundred thousand dollars is for to hire a consultant to assist us in developing a strategic plan.
Strat planning, right on. Thanks. Okay, uh, continue on.
Okay, so next we have our Hope Arena and Aquatic Center. This is for Hope in Area B. For the purpose of this service area, um, it's recreational opportunities and community access to the arena, aquatic center, fitness area, and weight room and conference center. So key highlights of this plan are lifecycle asset replacement as well as the heat exchange upgrade. Ongoing initiatives, um, to maintain and optimize the operations of the facility, offer a diverse range of classes at various fitness levels, provide swim lessons um, for all ages and skill levels, and making the facility available for rentals to host events, meetings, gatherings in the community. Risk and challenges for this budget, um, rebuilding patronage and revenue after COVID, building savings for uh, future asset replacement. Other considerations are impacts from union contract and staffing costs, as well as challenges posed by staff shortages. So on the screen, we have a list of two thousand and twenty-four proposed projects and initiatives. Um, we do have some more information in the following slides on the heat recovery project. But also we have the conference center upgrades on the screen as well as the mezzanine and north door replacement initiative. If there's any questions on those.
Okay, don't see any.
So looking specifically at the heat recovery project, um, construction is expected to be completed by August of two thousand and twenty-four. Ongoing for into two thousand and twenty-five is the testing and optimization for a seamless operation. And the green impact, so annual G H G savings of fifty-five tons of CO2 E and twenty-four percent facility emission reduction. Project highlights um, include the concrete ice lab replacement, um, ammonia, electrical upgrades and heat recovery system for pool heating. So this slide is uh, to show the funding sources. I believe this report came through, or these numbers came through in the Fe- or the July report of two thousand and twenty-three. Um, just showing the breakdown of funding that will fund the project. Looking forward at the full five-year plan, we have a large list of initiatives through there. So the two thousand and twenty-four building upgrades and equipment replacement, two thousand and twenty-five building upgrades, including the exterior roofing and other improvements, two thousand and twenty-six building upgrades and equipment replacement, two thousand and twenty-seven and two thousand and twenty-eight as well. We can answer any questions on these if there are any.
Thank you.
Director Adamo, I believe is.
Oh, Director Dabo, sorry, just you there.
Thanks very much, uh, through the chair. Thanks very much for this, this um, update. Couple of questions. One of the things I noticed is that there, we talk about trying to get our, our members' participation back up and improve the, the numbers of usage. And I noticed that there's nothing in there in terms of a marketing initiative or an open house program um, through the process of, of doing all of these upgrades. And then after the upgrades are done, so I'd like to um, see if that gets included somewhere along the way. And as well, we're also what approximately one point eight million dollars short of, of being able to complete this five-year plan. Is that correct? In terms of the current funding program that we have in place?
Specifically to the heat recovery project?
Well, if it's showing right now, the whole program over the five-year plan is showing six point two three nine million and we have four point six or four point seven in funding. Is that, did I miss something along the way?
Sorry, the.
Two separate projects.
Yeah, the five-year horizon is all of the projects in the five years.
Gotcha. Perfect. I'm having some, I'm having some conversations right now with people from different areas of Area B, um, already asking questions about this and how the taxation is going to be uh, initiated. So we'll speak about all of that in the next few weeks, I I would imagine. But yeah, this was very detailed. Thank you.
Is it correct to say from this slide that this is being funded without a tax? Additional tax requisition then?
I believe there is some taxation impacts.
There are, but okay. So that's some, that would be in the reserve saving portion or?
I'm sorry, was the question if the heat recovery project was going to be funded through extra taxation or future asset management?
No, the, the heat recovery project itself.
No.
Okay. Yeah, looking at this, I see a list, but I don't see an additional requisition on that. Yes, so.
The main increase for the requisition in two thousand and twenty four is due to the transfer to savings for future lifecycle replacement.
Okay. All right, let's continue on you.
Just before we get to the next steps, just want to point the, the board members to the financial summaries in the back. This is where we, we project the average tax impacts for residents in your areas. So for a large number of the regional and subregional services. The, the average tax impact is in the, the ten to fifteen dollar range. There's a couple of anomalies in that. I'm looking at Hope, thinking of what we just saw, the capital. Capital lifecycle replacement costs have, have, will impact the residents of Hope. But by and large, we're in the, the ten to fifteen dollar range. And then we also have the electoral area impacts as well. So I just pointed to that to, to really, to wrap up what, what these, the impacts of these budgets are on the residents in your communities. And I also note how I spoke earlier about the, the assessments. There's two notable changes with the assessment data from last year. One is that the, the, there's a big shift from other classes. They're taking a lot, more of a portion of the residential property taxes. And there's also decreases in the residential values. So all to say that the tax impacts that you see in your presentation today are generally speaking on the high side. And they'll end up being lower than that. But those are, to be conservative, those are the figures we presented today. Before, and then do you have any, if there's any questions, we're happy to take them. Otherwise, we have a resolution to look forward to.
I think Director Barkman, you had a question on the subregional park service with Abbotsford and Area. Which area is that?
Subregional parks, I believe.
It was the Abbotsford Park Subregional. What budget number was that? Sorry?
Seven three five.
Seventy five, there you go.
Seven three five.
Seven three five.
Three five, okay.
Believe it's eighty one in your agenda package. Or eighty three.
Or three hundred and forty six.
Right, exactly.
Go ahead, Director Barkman, for yours.
Okay, the reason I asked this question is I brought it up on our city budget. Discussion and they said it was F E R D. And so that's why I bring it up here. I've been pushing this rope uphill for, since. Two thousand and five and understand there is money. So is there a plan down the road? The, there's so many things that I think, and I'll, I'll say this greatly. That we're missing in Abbotsford as far as tourism. People come and spend a lot of money. There's a lot of people who use the facility. It would definitely change how many bones are going down the freeway to Chilliwack. So is there a plan down the road for a boat lodge with the money that's set aside? I think that we got it from the G V R D. And is that in any work plan in the near future?
Chair Lam, I think we can turn that question to Christina Vaktavine.
Sure, Ms. Vaktavine.
Thank you, through the chair. Abbotsford and us in terms of staff have continued to meet on a regular basis to understand the operational needs. Just for some context, the city of Abbotsford has the main operation and maintenance contact for both Glen Valley and Mescuit Trail Regional Park. And so we've been working with their team and my understanding is that it's a new planning director in parks who has just joined their team as well. We met recently and we're talking about a number of things, including what is the five year capital wish list? Needs, operations, and some of it, which you will see in this presentation today. We also did discuss the boat launch because you are correct. A number of years ago, there was money that was collected for feasibility studies. And so, and we're aware that we have this money. And so we're connecting with the Abbotsford staff just around what are we going to do with, or what is the plan? What would you like to do with this money? So their Parks Recreation Culture Director is looking through, from my understanding. Working with a river hydrologist to understand feasibility of what that looks like. I haven't heard details on it, but that was my understanding what next steps were going to look like. And that there was going to be some looping back, both to F P R D because it's a budget thing, but also to Abbott's your council because there is an interest there.
Imagine with a project like that, and I only speak from thinking about the context in Chilliwack. That there'd be significant engagement required with other regulatory bodies, like D F O would be top of the list. If you're doing anything in around the foreshore on the Fraser River, I think you'd have pretty serious considerations we had. On how that, how that would affect fisheries and riparian habitat, that kind of thing. So probably not something that's going to get built next year, but good, good to, good to start having that conversation. Director Popov.
Thank you, Chair Lam. The property on Old Drive that, that we own, what, what is a plan moving forward with that? Is, I didn't see anything in the budget about that at all.
Is that Hospital District, probably, right? Different budget?
Okay, that's separate. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I guess the short answer is we don't own it. The hospital district. Director Gibson, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Director Barkman's query related to my issue with regard to the one hundred thousand. We're putting into a parks, regional parks strategy and study. And I want to make the point that our parks are used a great deal. By people that don't even live in our regional district. And I think that caveat needs to be considered. And how do we consult with not only our users, but potential users? It's very simple for us to simply ask people who come to the parks, what do you think? But we really don't get to the heart of the problem. So I want to make a recommendation that perhaps staff could come back. A model of the study prior to going ahead and doing it, because I'd like to be involved in that as one board member.
Yeah, so a couple of things, and I think you make a good point. The first one that I would make is that Abbotsford doesn't contribute to that, that particular budget. Where that strat planning is coming out of, you contribute to this other subregional budget. But in terms of looking at who are, who are the users that are coming in into the parks? I know our, our, our outdoor recreation master planning and some of the work that we've been doing on that did some, some pretty significant work. They were doing trail counters. They had people out doing surveying, just understanding who, what user groups were using the parks. Where they were coming from, what they were doing when they were there, what they wanted to see. And I think we're getting, you know, we're constantly working on that program as well. So that's a, that's a really good point to bring up. And I think that's probably something we could refresh some of the board on is, is. The, the results of some of that engagement and, and, and who is coming and utilizing some of the parks out here. That's a good, that's a good point, Director Gibson. Director Jerson.
Thank you, Chair Lam. Yes, I just had a question. I guess going through the finances and the deep, the report was very well done. Thank you to staff. The regional administration align item, which is the most significant increase from what I could see. When, I think staff already impact that we, that's divided based on assessment value. And I'm just wondering if, when looking at other districts, is that consistent as well? Has it ever changed? I'm just seems like, I'm just wondering kind of how that was, that formula started. I know from others, the other slides, it looks like there's percentage bases when we looked at transportation. So I'm just kind of curious where, how that comes about.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. It goes back to Local Government Act and then the establishment of the, the bylaw for the service areas. So it's based on property assessment. By and large, the majority of the, the service area budgets are based on property assessment. And not, not, not the alternative percentage. Those are, I would say, a little bit more of the anomalies rather than the norm.
Okay, are there other questions? Don't see any. Okay, let's move to, I think you staff have got a, a proposed resolution. Okay, so before you, you've got a couple of options, Ms. Landrill. You want to speak those?
Sure, thank you. Thank you through the chair. So the, the first option, so both of these resolutions, our plan is to, to, as mentioned earlier, go for public consultation. For the last two weeks to, to allow the public to see the, the, the financial plan in its entirety. We have started the public engagement for a long period of time, but they haven't seen the whole thing in totality. So the first option here is to direct staff to prepare the financial plan for the public consultation. Is presented within this, this report and the materials today. Or the second option is if there were any recommended amendments. And then we would go ahead and prepare the financial plan with any amendments as directed by this committee of the whole.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director Horn has moved to option one. Is there a secondary? It's seconded by Director Macalonic and further discussion. I have one comment, just to throw a wrench into a nice smooth process so far. It is, it's come up in conversation around the asset management project coming out of the. The regional administration budget, which again, by assessment, it sounds like, you know, would be. Just based on those assessment numbers would be proportionally, I guess, allocated to municipalities across the region. I'm wondering if it needs either an amendment to the option. Or it needs a separate direction that any monies allocated to the current regional G C F projects. Not the E A G C F projects, but the regional G C F projects. I'm thinking of the upgrade downstairs and a couple of, any savings that may exist in there. Be applied to the, to that asset management procurement. So if there were any savings, that they be applied to that to offset some of those. So in my mind, it's regional to regional. But I just look to staff to see if I'm just muddying the waters completely here. Ms. Ken.
Yeah, I'll, I'll start and then perhaps Kelly can weigh in. From my perspective, I think we absolutely can do that. I am anticipating that there would be some savings. And I do believe that under the parameters and the criteria of the G C F, that the asset management system could be. Eligible and Kelly is saying yes. So absolutely, if you would like to move that amendment, it would be well received.
Thank you. I'd like to put that forward as an amendment and that any savings be utilized from G C F, regional G C F. Projects be allocated to the asset management project. Thank you. It's been seconded by Director Pranger. Further discussion on that amendment. Comments or questions, Director Lowen?
What's the alternative to not proceeding as you suggest with the recommendation?
Ms. Ken, I'm not sure what any, any savings where they would be, I, I assume they would be reallocated back into eligible projects. Which may very well come back to what we're talking about now, but.
That's correct. I believe that the original motion from the board was that any unused funds. Would go towards eligible projects that were approved. So for example, the care center or regional parks, something of that nature. We have made those allocations. The deadline was two thousand and twenty three. There is no reason that we can't change our plan. And it, it may not be a huge amount of money that we go towards that, but certainly it would help to offset that overall price.
Thank you. I'm happy to support your recommendation. Heidret, Lowen, Director Horn.
Thank you. A question to the chair. If I understand the amendment, is the idea that this would be one time money used against a one time expense and asset mass management? So it's not going to hit on taxes next year because we're using capital resource for an operational expense?
And that, that, that was my intent is a, as a one to one application of it. The idea that I, I think, I, I, I get a sense that there is an idea, you know, that there is a, a bit of an undercurrent. That we're paying, municipalities would be pairing, paying quite a proportional share of the, of the asset management software. And so if there were savings on those regional sides, again, where there's a, where there's a benefit. I think we just apply that benefit to the, to the software, make offset that. And, and, and let me be clear, that offset would benefit everybody, not just municipalities. That would benefit all of us in that budget because we all exist in that budget, you know?
Thank you. So that, that's helpful. The other thing I would say is it's not, in my opinion, captured in either of the options and didn't need to be. But I know there were a few times today where we asked for questions to come back that we couldn't have expected answers to. But I don't think they changed the amended motion. I do think it will be important. That we have that information at the adoption, at the occasion of adoption. And if there's a way for that to be a part of the consultation, especially that bit of granularity on how assessment values. What, how it may affect taxpayers, that would be useful. Thank you.
Certainly, thank you.
And my apologies, just when he thought it was going to be easy, I had to muddy the water. So are we ready on the amendments? All in favor? Posed if any of the items carries and on the motion as amended, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, posed if any of the items carries. Thank you. Next item.
Thank you. So the next item is public question period for items relevant to the agenda. We have no members of the public here in the boardroom, but we'll just turn things over to Jamie Van Ness for those viewing online.
Thank you. We do have one member of the public joining us today. So this would be your opportunity to ask a question relevant to the agenda. If you would like to hit the raise hand function to indicate you have a question. And it would appear we have no questions.
All right, next item.
Looking for a resolution to close the meeting.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Director Fassi, seconded by Director Reed. All in favor, posed if any items carries and.
Just give us a couple of minutes to set up the room.